Okay, at this time we'll ask the clerk if she'll establish a roll call and establish a quorum of the board.
Mr. Blake?
Present.
Here.
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 Present.
Thank you, all members are present tonight. Tonight, we have on our public hearing the adoption of the millage rate to be set at 5.735 mils in the unincorporated area and 7.39 mils in the incorporated area. And so, we will take a look at that and give just a little bit of background on this and we'll allow anyone that wants to come up and speak or has any questions. There in the packet, there's a couple of spreadsheets that I put together to show you the history. And I think that's very important anytime we look at property taxes, that you look at the trend and look at the history. And by state law, we have to do a five-year history. This here gives you a seven-year history snapshot on the spreadsheet. So what we're looking at, what we've attempted to do the last several years, to try to keep the property taxes as flat as possible. We've been relying on some of our other revenue streams for increases to offset inflation costs. But if you look across that spreadsheet where it says Walker County property taxes levy, plus or minus, we've been pretty flat at about $14 million a year, as say, as an average. When you look on the dollars of increase each year, see some years, we've gone up some, some years it's gone down. And in 2023, the total proposed increase is $10,537. So that's the amount of additional total revenue that the county would receive from property taxes from everybody combined. So keep in mind that your county government does not set the millage rate for the school system, and we don't set the millage rates for the other local governments, being your other cities. This is just county operations only. So when you look at over that seven-year history, the total increase is $125,414 total over seven years. Not just this year, but that's all years added together. So this year again is $10,537. And so, try to put that in a bar chart there where you kind of see that that is a level. On the second sheet, this is the digest value. This is what all of the properties combined are valued. So you see the digest value in 2017 is $1,287,000 and change. And you see in 2021, it was almost a billion five, 2022 is a little over a billion eight. In 2023, it's two point, almost $2.3 billion of total digest value. So when you look from 2017 to 2023, it's almost doubled. The values of the properties in Walker County as a whole have almost doubled. You've gone from 1.3 billion to almost 2.3 billion. So but if you look, because we have rolled millage rates back, we have kept that steady level. So the only way we've been able to do that is to roll that millage rate back to keep the income level as consistent as possible. So the bar chart there shows from 2017 through 23, and you see in 22 and 23, the values have really shot up. And those values, we don't have any effect on those here as a board. Those values are set by the assessors office, and it's based off of comparable sales in the marketplace. And they have very strict guidelines that is managed and put upon them by the Georgia Department of Revenue. So they don't make the rules, we don't make the rules, they just have to abide by the rules to make those assessed values, and we don't have any part of that. But on the actual digest, you will see it breaks out all the different types of things that are taxed under the property tax. You'll see two sections there, unincorporated and incorporated. Your unincorporated is anything outside the city limits. Incorporated is going to be all of your cities combined. Anything within the city limits is what's called incorporated. So this shows the history of the real property, the motor vehicles, the mobile homes, the timber, heavy equipment, and gives you a total digest. And that's where I pulled my numbers from on these spreadsheets, is pulling data right off of this report. So you'll see there, in the bottom left-hand corner, you see in 2018, the total county taxes levied was $14,175,309. Go to the far right page, third line from the bottom, $14,92,068. So you'll see very little movement there. Again, the total increase this year is $10,537 total. That's as close to zero as I could get based off the way the formulas and the calculations, moving it about four places to the right of the decimal. If I go one digit lower, it shows me into negative number. So we was trying to get to zero, but the system just doesn't allow us to get there. So you see it's showing a total of a zero, a .07% change or increase. But if we take in one more dollar than we did the prior year, we have to advertise a tax increase. And that doesn't mean that your property taxes go up or not, because it's a combination of everybody combined. It depends on your assessed values, depends on your exemptions, your homestead and so forth. But if we bring in one more dollar than we did the prior year, the state looks at that as a tax increase. And so that's why we're here tonight, is because we're going to take in 10,000 more dollars. So it's so we have a tax increase. Also, keep in mind, traditionally, our homestead exemption has been $2,000. So if you live in your home and you've gone to the tax commissioner's office and you've been able to apply for that homestead, you only have to do it one time on your personal residence. But this past legislative session, the state government has taken and added an additional $18,000 homestead exemption. And so, that also will come off because the state is going to reimburse all the local governments for making up that difference in the shortfall of revenue. So many of you on your county taxes that are levied here by this body, you very well could possibly see a decrease in your taxes depending on how your property's set up and if you have your homestead and all, and what the value of it is. And so, look at your tax bills when you get them in closely, because you may see possibly a reduction or very little change. And it's all going to be driven by a lot of factors, but this doesn't necessarily mean you will or will not see a tax increase on your bill from the county government. So is there any additional comments from the board before we open it up to the floor?
No, sir.
Okay, if anyone has any questions or would like to speak, we ask you to come up to the podium and state your name for the record. This is the only topic that we can talk about at this time. There's other things on the next agenda that we'll be dealing with and taking action on tonight. So this only pertains to the millage rate only, only the millage rate. Does anyone who has any questions, comments about the millage rate? Okay, hearing none. Is there anything else from the board on the millage rate? Okay. All right then, we will move forward then, and again, we will, I'm sorry, does someone have something on the millage? Okay, maybe, okay, I guess not. Okay, just wanted to be, make sure I didn't miss anybody. Okay, all right, so the next thing we'll do is we'll jump over to our next agenda packet for our regular scheduled meeting. This is for August 24, 2023, at 7:00. We do have the agenda that has been published ahead of time. I do need to make a motion that we amend the agenda and add a resolution R.3623, which also should have been in the packets, but this didn't make our cutoff. But we do have a resolution to appoint a code official for our property maintenance. And so, we need to add that right, let's see here, we need to add that right after our resolution. So right after resolution R.3523, we need to add R.3623 for the code official. Does the board members have any other amendments or changes to the agenda?
No.
All right, hearing none, I have a motion by the chair to amend the agenda with that one modification. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second. My commissioner asks you, any further discussion of the board to amend the agenda? Okay, all right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda has been modified. Next item that we would have on that is to approve the minutes of the millage rate hearing, which was the hearing number one, held on August the 10th, 2023, at 8:00. And that was held at the Walker County Civic Center. When we have a millage rate change, we have to have three public hearings. One of those has to be in the morning time, and so we go with that one typically in the center of the county to make it easier for people to get to. So that was held back on August 10th at 8:00. Is there any modifications or concern from the board about the minutes?
No, sir.
Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
So moved.
Have a motion by Commissioner Hart, do we have a second?
Say it.
Have a second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion of the board on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the minutes are approved as presented by the clerk. Okay, the next time, our next item we have is approval of the minutes for setting the millage rate at the public hearing number two, which was held here on August 10th at 6:30 PM before our regular scheduled meeting. Is there any questions or concerns of the board about the minutes from that meeting?
No, sir.
Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Hart, any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the minutes are approved. Okay, then our last set of minutes was from a regular scheduled meeting held here on August 10th, 2023, at 7:00. The clerk has prepared the minutes from that meeting as well. Do we have a motion from a board member to approve these minutes?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion by Commissioner Blake Moore, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by commissioner asks you, any further discussion of the board on those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the minutes are approved as presented. Okay, we have several public hearings tonight regarding our planning and zoning. This is the second hearing on these. The first hearing was held at the Planning Commission Office or at the Civic Center by the Planning Commission last week. And so, the first one we have is for a request to rezone from R.2 Residential to an R.8 Residential slash Agriculture for Property located at 2342 Foster Mill Drive, Lafette, Georgia, 30728, tax map and partial number 0-481-005A. So is there anyone here that wants to speak in opposition of this request? Anyone in opposition? Okay, see no one's hand, does anyone want to speak in favor of this? Or if the applicant would like to speak, you don't have to, but you are allowed to speak if the applicant wants to speak on this request, or anyone in favor? Okay, see no one, we'll move forward to our, our next group. We have a request to rezone R.2 Residential to I Industrial for Property located at 2185 Highway 337, Lafette, Georgia, 30728, tax, tax map and partial number 0-474-003. Anyone wants to speak in opposition of this request to rezone from residential to industrial? Any opposition? Hearing none, is the applicant or anyone that wants to speak in favor of this? Again, it's your option, you don't have to. Yes, ma'am, you would like to speak? Okay, please come to the podium. We ask that you state your name for the record, please.
Good evening, Hannah Claire Boggs, B-O-G-G-E-S-S, on behalf of the applicant here today. We represent potential purchasers of the property, and so they'd like to rezone as a condition to the purchase. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the rezoning application. They did request a condition that there be a landscaping buffer along the portion of the property that fronts the highway, and then also along the southern portion of the property. We would request, we have no problem with the landscaping along the highway, but our client is also looking to purchase the property to the south for the same use. So we're fine with the landscaping buffer along the highway, but we request that there not be a landscaping buffer on the south. That property is within the city limits, and so the city actually requires a landscaping buffer along the other side of that piece, because it's residential on the other side. So there will be a buffer along the property as a whole, but just not the piece within the county. That's the subject of this rezoning action. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Questions from anyone?
So the property, the buffer you're talking about delineating backs up to industrial property also, correct?
Yes, so, yes.
That's what I thought.
Yes.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wants to speak on this rezone from residential to industrial? All right, hearing none, we'll go to the next one. We have Joseph Allen Atkins request, three variances for less than five acres in A1 Agriculture Zone for property located at 920 Moon Lake Road, Cloudland, Georgia, 30731, tax map and partial number 0-377-009. Anyone that wants to speak in opposition to this one tonight? Any opposition? Okay, does anyone like to speak in favor of this, or if the applicant would like to speak, or someone representing the applicant? Okay, sir, you state your name for the record, please.
My name's Fred Ho. I work for a land surveyor, and we cut this up into three tracks. Joe and his mom own this place, and she died, but his sister and nephew also have residence on it. And they want to cut it up into three, three tracks, but the tracks that he gives his nephew and sister has to be combined into their bigger tracks to make it one, one big track than the three-point, whatever it is, gonna be standing alone on it.
Questions, any board member? Okay, anything else?
That's it.
Okay, anyone else like to speak in favor or against this request? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to the next one. William and Claudia request a variance to divide off less than five acres in an A1 Agriculture Zone for property located at 1401 Stanfield Drive, Lafette, Georgia, 30728, tax map and partial number 0-456-016. Anyone in opposition of this request? Any opposition? Okay, hearing none, it's the applicant or anyone wants to speak in favor of this request? Yes, sir, please come forward. Please state your name for the record, sir.
My name's William Clark, I'm gonna go by Bill. Our, my mother-in-law is 95. She's lived with us for nine years. It's gotten to where we can't go anywhere or do anything because of Ms. Evans. What we would like to do, and what we have done between family, is to give my sister-in-law two acres. We're gonna build her a house. My house is on this side, her house will be over here, so that she can help us take care of Ms. Dodd. That's the only, what we're asking for.
Okay, is there any questions of the board?
How many acres do you have on?
I've got, on that side road, I got 35.
35.
On this side of the road where we live, we got six.
Okay. I take it you farm that 35?
No, sir, it's mostly trees, but I do bush out.
Okay.
But there's, there's not been any agriculture on it that I know of, probably 40, 50 years.
Yes, sir.
And Ms. Dodd's lived with us nine years. Mr. Dodd passed away a couple of years ago, but we can't go to town hardly, y'all, you know?
Yes, sir.
And if we move Linda, that's my sister-in-law, that'll help us.
Okay, anyone else? Thank you, sir. Appreciate you. Okay, anyone that wants to speak for or against this request for Stanford Drive, Lafette? All right, hearing none, we'll move to our next items. Okay, at this time, we do allow anyone that would like to come up and make any public comment to the board. We do ask you to stay within a five-minute timeline, but this would be your time if there's anything about county government that you would like to speak about, anything that's going on that we may be able to assist on or talk about, we'd be happy to hear from you. So yes, sir, you'd like to come up first? Just ask you to state your name when you're ready, sir.
Donald White is my name, and I'm here, first of all, Mr. Chairman and all the other commissioners, it's good to be here. I haven't met with you guys, it's been some time ago. It's good to be here. I have a request, first of all, I have some questions concerning the, the recreation, the Lower Green Recreational Area over there at, I forget what street it is, but you know where it is. For some years, it has not been occupied to any, any extent. I, I don't know why, but perhaps because of the activities that were going on at the, the main recreational center. But I'm representing, along with some others, the Hill High and Elementary Alumni Association, and we would like to, we're requesting, we were met with the city last week, and we were requesting of them, since the city is primarily taking care of that area now. But we were asking the city, and we were told that funding, of course, it's, you know, money's always, but they had made some kind of commitment to do some paving over there. The gravel are over there now. Anyone, it doesn't matter what your age is, you drive up there and you get out of your car, if you aren't careful, you're gonna fall, because the gravel is so loose. The, the major issue is the paving. And the renovation, I noticed, I observed some things that have been done, new, new air conditioning system and all. And what our Alumni Association would like to do, we provide a, a, a meeting place on a monthly basis, and any other functions that we might have to be used, not just us, but anyone, you know, but it needs to be, that's a fine building over there. I remember when it was built, I was a young fellow, but I'm forgetting all of that, but nonetheless, we, we want, we want to as alumni, we want it to be refurbished, we want it to be used, and we're the, my group, you know, won't be able to lose, use it as long as the younger ones coming on, but it's not only for the, the alumni that are in my group and younger, but for their descendants, their relatives, those young people coming on, because there were some in elementary school, and they aren't as old as myself, but thank you for that time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any comments? Anyone else like to speak tonight before the board?
I don't need to say this, right?
Yeah, but be nice.
Okay. Start no trouble.
This is not a talk show.
It's not, okay, all right.
Tell us who you are.
Okay, I also attended.
Tell us who you are.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry, I'm Eddie Upshaw. I live in Chickamauga, and, and, and I'm here with some friends, but I won't tell you the story about Hill High. I went to Hill High, and then I went to Channing Valley, and my wife started working over at Channing Valley Middle School, and the principal said, "Do you know Eddie Upshaw?" She said, "Yeah." He said, "Well, we got his transcripts here, you don't like it?" So she got him, read him, she said, "Man, how did you get out of high school?" Yeah. I thought, I thought, go get those things, I could burn them with the trash, you know, so, but, but yeah, I'm, I'm here representing some friends of them. When we start discussing the, the still spirits, I want y'all to consider some of the people that's been in the county the longest, and, and how they contribute to our county economically, civically, too. Y'all know I'm involved in a lot of civic stuff, and, and some of these people have really been involved in our county over the years. So, I mean, I don't know how the process is gonna be, but I, you know, I wish y'all would have considered the longevity of the applicants in Walker County. And again, thank you, you guys do a wonderful job, and I appreciate you.
Thank you, Eddie. Wish I could see those transcripts.
Anyone else that'd like to address the, the board tonight? Yes, sir.
Oh, no.
Oh, I'm sorry, Randy wants to come on up, come on up, Randy.
There you go.
Please state your name for the record.
My name's Randy Pittman, and I'm representing the Walker County Historic Preservation Commission. Just an update on the reenactment, yesterday, the Atlanta campaign was reporting 900, 1,900 reenactors have already registered. They look for influx on walk-ins for 200 to 300 then, I think they said, registration ends the 19th, I think. So, you know, we're looking at 2,500 reenactors alone, not counting all the support and everything. Also, if anybody in the community has a water buffalo or dump tanks, they're in need of them. We thought that Walker County Fire Department had some, come to find out, we don't. So we need some help in digging some of them up. So appreciate y'all, thank you.
Thank you for all that you do.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anyone else like to speak tonight? Okay, we're gonna move forward with our agenda then. Okay, under our unfinished business ordinance 0-0423 to amend Chapter Four of the alcoholic beverage of the Code of Walker County, Georgia. We do have a, the updated revision documents, there are, based off of the, some comments and feedback and some additional work of the staff, there are a few revisions or additions to the document from our meeting from two weeks ago, and those modifications are all in red, that you can see those throughout the document. And so, we tried to accommodate as many of the requests and suggestions, and we had a lot of really good feedback, and that's why it's good to have these public hearings for, for information, for feedback and comment. And so, we make sure that we have as solid of a document as we can. This is modifying and re-adopting the entire Chapter Four, which is also inclusive, you know, of the other things, malt beverages and wine and everything, because there was some repetitive language, and so we tried to, to clean up, because the ordinance had been updated over different administrations over different years. So Joe Leggie and our attorney David Gottlieb's done a good job of going through the document and making sure everything's in current compliance with state law, and, because that's always a moving target as well. So I'll open up the floor to any board member that would have any additional comments, questions, or modifications, or what your pleasure is at this point.
Yep, I think they did a good job going through it, had a lot of good input from people in the county, and I think we got a pretty good product here. So thank you, Joe and David, for your work on that.
And also, too, any of the, any of the time that we make a modification to, on ordinance, if we find things later that needs to be modified, we can come back and do that. That would also be advertised, we would have two public hearings again, to allow people to come and speak on those modifications. So our entire book of ordinance is, is living documents that will be obviously modified over the years to come as needed, and this one clearly fits into that same realm. So it's a learning curve, and those of you that participated with us two weeks ago, I think I admitted then, we're still learning. So be patient with us, and, and we're doing our best to get it, get it right the best we can. So that's our intentions, to, to make it as smooth and transparent and as easy as possible. Anything else from the board, any other suggestions, comments, modifications, or anything?
Mr. Chair, just to reiterate what Commissioner Hart said, just appreciate Joe, everything you did. You and I had multiple conversations, and I certainly appreciate all your hard work on this. And David, thank you very much as well, you and your staff, everyone in the office did a wonderful job.
Very good. Any further discussion of the board? All right, hearing none, do we have a, a motion to approve the ordinance? We don't take any more comments from the floor at this time, I'm sorry. Ordinance, to approve ordinance 0- or excuse me, O-0423 to amend Chapter Four, the alcohol beverage of the Walker County. beverage of the Walker County, Georgia. We have a motion to approve this ordinance.
Motion to approve.
A motion by Commissioner Stoltz. Do we have a second?
Negative.
Have a second by Commissioner Hart. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion to approve this is passed. Okay, also under our resolution, R-31-23 to revise the fee schedule. And so, I will read that resolution. It says, "Resolution R-31-23, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to revise the schedule of fees for the alcohol beverage license, whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County desires to revise the license fee for selling alcoholic beverages, and whereas the Board has authorized to set fees pursuant to the Walker County Code of Ordinance, and whereas the Board recently amended Chapter 4 of the County Code of Ordinances to establish new licenses for retail package sales of distilled spirits, manufacturing of distilled spirits, wholesale of distilled spirits, and in-room service of alcohol beverages. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that the fees associated with the alcohol beverage license shall be set forth in Exhibit A attached hereto and made a part thereof. Be it further resolved license issues prior to September 30th, 2023, for retail package sales of distilled spirits only, will be valid through September 30th of 2024. So resolved and adopted the 24th day of August, 2023. And attached to that is Exhibit A that shows the new fee structure that would go into effect immediately. And typically, our license cycle runs from October 1st through September 30th of the following year. And that's why we made the modification this one time on the distilled spirits. So that way, you wouldn't get a license, say, in August or September, and have to turn around and get another one the very next month. So that first year, you could actually, you know, get a few more weeks than just the year. So this breaks out the license cost. Do we have any questions or comments or modifications from the board?
Yes, sir.
Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve Resolution 3123?
Motion to approve.
A motion by Commissioner Blake Moore. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Resolution is approved to set the fee structure. Okay, under new business, this is a resolution, R-32-23, to set forth the criteria for the initial application process to obtain a license for the package sale of distilled spirits. So I will read this, just about one page. A resolution, R-032-23, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to set forth the criteria for the initial application process to obtain a license for package sales of distilled spirits, whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County recently amended Chapter 4 of the County Code of Ordinances to establish a new license for retail package sales of distilled spirits, and whereas the potential exists for the county to receive more applications than license allotted upon the initial offering. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that the following procedure shall be observed to address the initial license applications for package sales of distilled spirits. A, the planning office located at 122 Highway 95 in Rock Springs will accept applications between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. for five business days beginning September the 5th, 2023, and concluding on September the 11th, 2023. B, the Alcoholic Beverage Commission shall consider applications based on the following criteria. Number one, the proposed location for the package store already has the proper zoning, or an application for a zoning change has already been submitted. Two, more than 1,500 feet separate from, separate, separates, thank you, separates the proposed location from all other proposed locations, giving due regard to the nature of a commercial area. Three, the nature of the community near the proposed outlet location, that is, whether the same is predominantly residential, industrial, or commercial. Number four, proximity to public parks, playgrounds, and schools. Five, the square footage of the proposed location. Six, whether the proposed outlet location has adequate off-street parking facilities or other parking available for its customers. Seven, a notarized statement from a bank or similar financial institution that the applicant has sufficient financial ability to purchase and maintain a minimum average retail inventory of distilled spirits in the amount not less than $200,000. And eight, meets all other requirements under Chapter 4 of the Code of Walker County. C, if there are multiple applications seeking a license for the same location, and all applicants meet the criteria set forth in B, then a blind draw among those applicants will be conducted to determine the application to receive the license for the specified location. So resolved and adopted the 24th day of 2023. We'll open the floor for the board for any discussion, suggestions, or modifications to this resolution. Anyone have any suggestions or modifications?
No, sir, I'm good with that. I think it's very thorough.
Okay. All right. So, hearing none, do we have a motion to approve Resolution 3223 to set the criteria and process for license package sales of distilled spirits?
Yes, sir, someone.
Have a motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The resolution and criteria has been established and passed. Okay, Resolution R-33-23, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to adopt a millage rate for the unincorporated and incorporated areas of Walker County, Georgia, whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County Board is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, and whereas pursuant to the authority vested in the board, and it appearing that the total property subject to levy for maintenance and operations after allowances for the exemptions deductions is $1,661,503,292 for the unincorporated area of Walker County, and $617,502,870 for the incorporated area of Walker County. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, by hereby duly elect hereby levy tax and fixed rate as follow. So, the net tax millage rate for the unincorporated area would be 5.735 mils, and the incorporated, the net tax would be 7.39 mils. So approved and adopted the 24th day of 2023. Do we have a motion to approve the resolution as presented?
Yes, sir, someone.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hart to approve the resolution. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The resolution passes, and the millage rate has been set. Okay, Resolution R-34-23, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to appoint a member of the Chickamauga Public Library Board, whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County Board is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, and whereas one of the duties delegated to the chairman of the board is to appoint members to all committees of the boards with the approval of the board, and whereas OCGA 20-5-42A provides that the county board of trustees shall consist of at least one appointee from each governmental agency financially supporting the library on a regular basis, and whereas OCGA 20-5-42B provides that the regional board of library trustees shall consist of trustees serving one member's county board who are appointed to the regional board by each county board for a term specified in writing pursuant to the Constitution and bylaws of the library system. Whereas, a vacancy exists on the Chickamauga Public Library Board due to the expiration of term of Maria Thompson, and whereas Chairman Whitfield submits the following appointment to serve on the Chickamauga Public Library door, board, excuse me, Matt Gregory for the term beginning July 1, 2023, and ending June 30th, 2026. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that the appointment of Matt Gregory is approved. So resolved and adopted the 24th day. In the packet, there is a letter from our regional director, Lisa Eubanks, asking for this appointment, and Matt Gregory has agreed to serve. And so, based off that recommendation, I'd like to make a motion to the board to approve this resolution to appoint Matt Gregory to the Chickamauga Library Board. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion of the board?
Yes, sir.
Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Resolution is approved to appoint Mr. Gregory. Okay, Resolution R-35-23, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to revise the schedule of fee for the planning department, whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County desires to revise the fee schedule for permits, inspections, zoning applications, planning and development, stormwater, and erosion control, special use permits, administration, and other matters, and whereas the Board has the authority to set the fee pursuant to the Walker County Code of Ordinance, Chapter 1, Section 1-20. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that the fees associated with the Walker County Planning Department shall be set forth in Exhibit A attached hereto and made part thereof. So resolved and adopted the 24th day of August. The main thing that is driving this fee structure change, about two years ago, there was a state law change that mandated that no local government could charge a cellular phone company for locating a tower or co-locating a tower more than $500. That was the max fee schedule that could be charged, and that was set by the state legislators and approved and signed off by the governor. My interpretation originally was that it was only for small cell technology, which was really going to affect your major metro areas. It was further brought to our attention by a cellular applicant that know it did include all cell towers and all co-locates. So, our county attorney has researched this, has consulted with ACCG, and has determined that the max cost is $500. So, we have adjusted that on our fee structure, about 10 lines down, where it says new cell tower or co-locate or similar, is now in the amount of $500. The other modification, or the only other modification on this, is under our inspections, which is about halfway down the page, for the electrical permit inspection, footing, foundation, rough end, permanent power, final walkthrough, temporary power, those all were originally and have been, I think, from the beginning, Mark.
Yes, yes.
Yes, were all just $50 per inspection, and that's been in place since 2008 or so.
Yeah, yeah.
Many, many years. And so, there's not been any adjustment in there for inflation. So, the personnel costs, field costs, overhead, benefits, and all, Phil, let's in order to raise those from $50 to $80. If I'm not mistaken, all other pricing on here stays the same. I don't think there was any other suggestions, whether, John, I think that's all we had, wasn't it?
And John, didn't you, you had done, you kind of researched around, and we're still well below our neighbors around us on those rates, and it also didn't affect any of the rates as far as your square footage price or any building permit prices now, so you speak on that for us?
Please come up to the podium so we can catch you at home, too. Thank you for that job.
So, the square footage price of new construction and remodels, and from commercial to residential to agricultural buildings stayed the same. Nothing's changed, except for the tower price, because that was mandated to do, and then also the permit fees for individual permits. What it was at was just where we were probably, you know, 70% below surrounding areas, and so now we're still probably 40% below at times. So, we're still well below surrounding areas, but there was a need to increase it due to the cost of, you know, vehicles of almost double gas wages and benefits, whatnot, just like Mr. Whitfield said.
Yeah, so there is, it is a two-page, and there's a lot of things on here, from subdivision, plot approvals, you know, stormwater, a lot of things. And so, these were the only modifications that myself and our planning director, John, was recommending. Any further questions or discussion of the board on the fee structure?
I do have a question. So, does this affect permits that are already pulled?
No, sir.
So, permits pulled from today going forward?
That's correct, yes. So, whatever permit that's already out there, construction going on, this does not affect anything. When you come into the office from, you know, when it's adopted on, the fees will be increased from then forward.
That goes and affects immediate progress.
Right, yes. Good question, very good. Any other questions? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve Resolution 3523 to revise the fee schedule for the planning department?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion by Commissioner Askew. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Hart. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The resolution is approved to establish the revised fee structure. Okay, we have the request for rezone from R2 Residential to R...
I'm gonna add that.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Yeah, I was about to miss that. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Big one.
Yeah, I had it here, sir.
Resolution.
Oh, here it is. Thank you for that. I was about to mess up. Yes, Resolution R-36-23, the code official. So, this is the one that we amended the agenda on, but should be in your packet. Resolution R-036-23, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to appoint a code official for property maintenance, whereas the Board of Commissioners is the governing authority of Walker County, and whereas Chapter 20 of the Code of Walker County calls for the code official to enforce the provisions of the International Property Maintenance Code, and whereas Chairman Whitfield submits the following appointments to serve effective immediately, John Persley, code official over Property Maintenance Code. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that the appointment of John Persley is approved. So resolved and adopted the 24th day of August, 2023. So, I'll make the motion of this resolution to appoint John Persley as our code official. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The appointment is made. All right, the next one we have is the rezone from an R2 Residential RA, which is residential agriculture for property located at 2342 Foster Mill Drive, Lafitte, Georgia, 30728, tax map in partial number 0-481-005A. This is the second public hearing we had tonight. This has gone before the planning commission as the first public hearing. And on this one, the recommendation of the planning commission was to approve with conditions, approve contingent on the Board of Commissioners revising the verbiage of text regarding chickens in an RA zone. What's the pleasure of the board?
Well, I support that. How do we go about revising that?
We can have that drawn. David, you can draw up a revision, and just, because it is a zoning snafu, like I said, agricultural, going to, no chickens, so. But David can handle that for us, I believe, and bring it to us, maybe the next...
Well, it would be a modification to the ordinance, so we would have to advertise it for two public meetings. And so, it's about a month process. But that can be done, like Commissioner Askew said, I think it was probably just an oversight, and the prior ordinance when it's established in previous administrations...
I would like to add, on this specific situation, seeing we are having to do, they haven't made the approval, and I think that would take effect immediately upon our vote, and then catch the ordinance up on the backside.
Agreed, I agree with Mark.
I agree. I agree with Mark, yes. I do.
Okay, good discussion. Any other discussion on this one? All right, do we have a motion to approve with the condition?
Yes, sir.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion of the Board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this one is approved with the condition. We'll get started on that and get that brought forward on that modification. Okay, the next one we have is request a rezone for R. 2 Residential to industrial for property located at 2185 Highway 337, Lafitte, Georgia, 30728, tax mapping partial number 0-474-003. This did go before the Planning Commission also on August 17. It was approved with conditions, approved with conditions that the vegetation buffer be placed on the road and the south property line. What's the pleasure of the Board or any discussion?
I make a motion to approve with taking, leaving the buffer at the road and taking one on the south out.
I agree.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Blake Moore to modify the condition to only have the vegetation buffer on the road frontage as requested by the applicant's representative. Do we have a second?
Yes, sir.
Second by Commissioner Hart. So I will strike through this, the buffer be placed on the road, I'll strike through and in south property line, so it only be placed on the road. Okay, any other conversation or suggestions on this?
Yes, sir.
Hearing none, we have the approval with the conditions that the vegetation buffer be placed only on the road. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that is approved with that condition with the modification. Okay, we have the request for three variances for less than five acres on an A1 agriculture zone for property located at 920 Moon Lake Road, Cloudland, Georgia, 30731, tax mapping partial number 0-377-009. This also went before the Planning Commission on August 17. They approved with conditions, approved with conditions that the two smaller tracks will be joined together with the owner's other tracks, making the whole, making the only variance for the large track of 3.27 acres was their recommendation to this Board. What is the Board's position on this?
That's what, that's what you're asking for.
Motion to approve. We have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz to approve with conditions. Do we have the second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Blake Moore. Any further discussion of the Board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it is approved with those conditions as requested. Okay, we have the variance request to divide off less than five acres in an A1 agriculture zone for property located at 1407 Stanfield Drive, Lafitte, Georgia, 30728, tax mapping partial number 0-456-016. This one also went before the Planning Commission on August 17, 2023. It was the recommendation of the Planning Commission to deny, the reasoning was to deny to the request being inconsistent with the zoning regulations for an A1. What is the pleasure of the Board?
Chairman, I would like to ask Mr. Persley to come up and give us a little background on this case, please.
Sure. John, come up, please. This is John Persley, our Planning and Zoning Director.
So I talked to Mr. Bill after the, after the meeting the other night. He asked me if I'd come out and take a look at what he had going on and what he was wanting to do. He did explain briefly why he was trying to get this rezone, but I don't think he, I don't think he relayed that kind of a hardship to bring someone to help take care of, I think it's his mother-in-law, his mother-in-law and whatnot. So I went out there, took a look at it with him. Here's his property. He lives on the smaller side, and I marked actually where he's wanting to put the two acres. That's not the scale. That's just drew in there to show you. And also, here's a picture of where that's at, and it's properly marked on that side. That was kind of part of the discussion is the utilities are right there, there's a utility pole, and it would just make it a whole lot easier. The property does join R. 2 on the other side of the road tied to his property on the east side, and then on the east side of the big plot of land, the 35 acres is tied to R. 2 as well. I did talk to the gentleman cutting hay, I was pulled in there, and he talked highly of you. I thought maybe you had something to do with that property as well, but he just explained that you're a good neighbor, and he had known you for X amount of years or whatnot, so.
So, John, let me ask you this. So if this variance is approved, is Mr. Clacken, if he wanted to do any more construction, any more houses, he would have to come back through the Planning Commission to do that? Is that correct?
That's absolutely right, yeah. There wouldn't, he would not be allowed to build the zoning that, he could not do multifamily, which the R. 2 that's adjoining to him could do that, but no on that property, he could not, no. It would be limited to what he's asking for and limited to one structure.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for John?
Of course.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
What is the Board's pleasure on this item tonight?
Ms. Chairman, I'd like to say I can appreciate Mr. and Ms. Clacken's predicament. It's very difficult to be a caregiver, and I can certainly understand what you're trying to do and taking care of your mother-in-law and your mother, and so I think that's a very honorable thing. So I would like to move forward and make a motion to approve this variance at this time.
Okay, so Commissioner Stoltz has made a motion to approve this request for this variance, which is to divide off less than five acres in an A1 agriculture zone. Is there a second to support that motion?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Blake Moore. Any further discussion of the Board for this approval? Okay, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, has been approved by the Board.
There was a little mistake on that address. You said 1407 and 1401, something like that matters.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for that. Yeah, I see that. I just, I accidentally misspoke on that. So yes, that is for property located at 1401 Stanfield Drive, Lafitte. Thank you very much, yes. Okay, we just kind of hit some of the highlights here of our statistical data. There's a lot of information on here, and you can take a look at this and show the history over the years. July, we did take in 60 dogs and 33 cats. Our elections register, registered 222 people to vote in the month of July, so there's 43,951 people that are registered to vote in Walker County. Our fire department answered 589 calls, and they installed 10 smoke alarms. We had 38 nights stayed out at Mountain Cove Farms. Single-family home construction had 47 permits pulled in the month of July. That's 241 permits pulled for single-family home construction in the unincorporated area of Walker County this year. Also, on patching potholes, the team with our new patching machine patched 488 potholes, so they had a big month of patching potholes in the month of July, and our transit numbers were down just a little bit, I guess probably for being so hot, people trying to stay in the cool, 2,361 transit trips. Also, there's a breakout there on our best friends report data metrics for a little more detail about our animal shelter. At this time, we'll move for Commissioner Cumance, and we'll start with Commissioner Blake Moore.
Just appreciate everybody coming out and getting involved in your government. Your input helps us make better decisions for what you need. I would like to encourage everybody, I know our fire chief's big on, if firefighters say us out, tell us they appreciate what we do. So I would like to encourage all of our citizens, if you see them out, tell them you appreciate what they do. And if you know anybody that would be interested, we need firefighters. Thank you.
Commissioner Askew.
Just a shout out to all of our county employees. Once again, you know, we do have a smaller crew than, you know, than we need sometimes, but they work, they work real hard and get to keep us moving. Thank you to them for the participation and the input that we have had. Like you said, as Commissioner Blake Moore said, it helps us to better understand what the needs are and to better, it helps us to better govern. Just also, like I said, you know, we know that football time is here, so be careful on Friday nights, support your local, your local schools, and let's get behind our teams, and just be careful out here with the heat, look in on your neighbors, and let's take care of those that need help. So appreciate y'all coming, like to see you back again.
Thank you. Commissioner Hart?
Y'all like to, if you didn't see it in the paper, if you weren't there, last Friday night in Lafitte High School, they dedicated the field to Jeff Suttons over there. Jeff has been a pillar of this community for many years. He grew up here, played football here, played football at Clemson, and came back and is taught in the school system here for over 35 years. Stacy and I were talking earlier, I think at least 35 years, so that was a great honor for Jeff, well-deserving of his family, and for all the, all the positive impact that he's had on our community.
Absolutely. Jeff was a wonderful football player, great guy.
He still is.
Yes, absolutely. So appreciate everyone coming out tonight, wonderful participation from the audience. Appreciate our employees. You guys do a wonderful job, appreciate everything you do, working out in this heat and just doing a great job. It's certainly appreciated. On September 2nd and 3rd will be the Kensington Rodeo, a great event in Kensington on Hogtown. Gates open at 5:00, rodeo starts at 8:00. It's at the Cove Arena off of Hogtown and Bluebird Gap. Also want to just wish everyone a very happy and safe Labor Day. And last, this Sunday, starting at 10:30, there will be a homecoming celebration at New Harvest Baptist Church, which is across from Roper. One of our former deputies, Brad Battles, will be the speaker that day, so it'll be a nice event. Invite everyone to come out. Thank you. Back to you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you. I just want to let everybody know and remind you that we are paving quite a few roads this latter part of the summer. We have about 41 miles of roads that are being paved, so be careful when you're out and about in the community. If you see pavement equipment or construction signs, be attentive to that. Also, they're continuing to still work at the bridge there in Chickamauga on Highway 27, there in front of the Shaw SI plant, so they're going to be doing some milling and paving there, too, from the state, so be watching for those lane changes and shifting and all. That's a very heavily traveled road, and, you know, safety's very important to all of us, and just be aware, there's going to be quite a bit of activity on the road, plus all of the school bus traffic and things that's going on. Public safety is just really, really be concerned, and just wanted to share that with you tonight. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, we do.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Hart.
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Askew, which surprises me. I'll have some. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all, we stand adjourned. Have a good evening.
Yes, we do.